Okay, I call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, six o'clock P. M. Can we get a roll call, please?
Melissa Muschek.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
Both Stephen Henry let us know they were unable to attend this evening, which moves us into approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason Dane discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved, which takes us into consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration. We did have a request to have D separately considered, so we're looking at A, B, and C for consent.
Move to approve, second.
Sandy, Melissa. Seeing no discussion, are you ready to vote? Okay, council, please vote. And that is approved, takes us to D.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane Sandy, discussion on that.
Are we okay voting on this with four members if one has to recuse?
Oh, you're gonna have one recuse?
I don't know.
Um, now let me process it in my brain.
I'm assuming that's why we're considering it separately.
Yeah, I have to abstain.
Okay, it's not ordinance. You should be fine.
Any other discussion? You'll probably, since it's not loaded, will you do voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, Aaron will call for the vote.
Melissa Muschek.
I.
Dane Nielsen.
I.
Jason Sampson.
Abstain.
Sandy Eric.
I.
Okay, that is approved, taking us in the public forum tied set time set aside for comments from the public on topics city business other than those listed on the agenda no action may be taken. First, we have a full-time police officer to swear in, so we'll have Chief Brandis come up and give us some background.
I wanted to introduce Joseph Meyer, Joseph from Rochester, Minnesota, the school, went out of state and got history. And so graduating and moved to the Ames area, the of Samantha, who is continuing her education in the state. He's also in the Minnesota National Guard, just finished his ROTC, the second lieutenant, goes to the cabin January sixth.
Awesome. Very good. Well, Joseph will have you meet me right up here up front.
Right hand and greet after me. I say the name.
I just admire.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
The Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the city code of Nevada, Iowa.
The city code of Nevada, Iowa.
And I will faithfully and partially.
And I will faithfully and partly.
Best of my ability.
The best of my abilities.
To share all the duties of the office.
They shared all the duties of the office.
Of police officer of the city of Nevada, Iowa.
Of police officer of the city of Nevada, Iowa.
As now or after required by law.
As now or after required by law.
Congratulations.
Hey, is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum this evening? And seeing none, we'll close public forum, moving us to old business A ordinance number ten sixty, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. In ordinance, deleting property from the tax increment financing district for the Nevada urban renewal area of the city of Nevada, Iowa pursuant to section four oh three dot one nine of the code of Iowa, third and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane Sandy, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, taking us to B approved pay request number thirty-eight for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase two from WBCI in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred twelve dollars and twelve cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Melissa. Need discussion there. Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to C approved pay request number twenty-nine for wastewater treatment facility improvements phase three from Boomerang Corporation, the amount of three hundred and ten thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars seventy-eight cents.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason and Dane. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, council, please vote. And is approved, takes us to D approved pay request for the nineteenth street trail project. A division one pay request one from TK Concrete Incorporated, the amount of one hundred and two thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars five cents.
Move to approve. Second.
Dane, Melissa. Any discussion there? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to B division two pay request one from construct incorporated in the amount of one hundred and five thousand one hundred sixty-two dollars fifteen cents.
Move to approve.
Second, Sandy and Dane. Discussion there, council, please vote. Is approved, takes us to E approved request from construct for two thousand and twenty-four street improvement project. A pay request number six and the amount of four hundred and seven thousand three hundred thirty-three, three hundred thirty-seven dollars fifty-two cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa. Jason. Need discussion there? Council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to B change order number five and the amount of sixteen thousand two hundred eighty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Sandy and Jason. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. That one is proved. Um, which takes us to F approved pay request number two for SRF Harrington Park project from construct incorporated in the amount of one hundred thousand six hundred sixty-one dollars and three cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason and Melissa.
Hey, Tim, is that project all but done, or?
Um, yeah, the grading is done, temporary seating is done. It'll have to be final seating, um, probably in the spring. Uh, for that, but that'll be a separate vegetation contract, and then we'll have to get some work done. We have. Part of the grading exposed sewer, sanitary sewage bathroom and the water line for the sheltered bathroom, and that will have to be corrected this fall or next four months.
Okay.
Anything else? Seeing none, council, please vote. Is approved, takes us to do business A approved change order to replace carriage walks for F Avenue and G Avenue project.
Evening, council. So the carriage locks are the space that uh is paved as between the sidewalk and the city street that goes through the right way. Those areas were uh moved and disturbed for the project to uh do the curb line and to do the repaving. Letters were sent out to the homeowners that had them, didn't get anything back. Unsure if they wanted them put back. Some of them were favors, some of them were had a dilapidated state. So um after reaching out to them in person, they did express that they would like them back. Uh, and so I have the bits in front of you. One was from. Uh, passer who did the curb and paving of this project. Uh, theirs is just for paving back the concrete. Um, we have one for my lung that is to tear out the old and put in new, so. I'll gladly answer. Any questions if you guys have one?
How many walks is this?
Eight.
Eight of them?
Yeah.
They all ate them, said they wanted them back.
Yes. Yep, one person said no at first. We're getting them on other projects. It's a miserable.
Yeah.
Off the off school, I guess.
Move to approve, uh, option one.
Is that the Mylum?
Yeah, I'll second.
Jason Dane discussion.
What seems in keeping with our philosophy of being as pedestrian friendly certainly as we can be and promoting wellness, so yes.
Seeing no other discussion, council, please vote. That is approved, that's right. Takes us to B ordinance ten sixty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, an order submitting chapter one sixty-five, section eight, use types of the city code by adding language pertaining to veres and amending table one six five dot oh nine dash two permitted uses first reading.
We didn't have a definition for brewery, and the ABD considers it a different verbiage uh when applying for their liquor license and things like that. So um ours is not combined as far, but a cocktail lounge and then. So it did not fit that it would be important to put it in there, so. We can send our letter to the ABD and verbiage patches uh as far as the table and permitted uses. Uh, throughout the downtown and urban corridor area, which is urban corridor is Lincoln Highway. Downtown district of that you is uh Sixth Street, and I propose changing um. From special use permit for a cocktail lounge brewery open. So that's the table, or that's the change to the table, so um. The other commercial areas are all permitted. It was just downtown urban corridor where special use permits. We do require special use permit on. Variation of things uh coming to town, but being ever set up for those in those buildings and things like that. That was my recommendation to change it, so. Work easier, I will.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Thanks, Sandy, Melissa, any discussion? Council, please vote. Is approved, takes us to C resolution number thirty-two, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Resolution approving the amended local planning and administrative contract between region twelve council governments incorporated in the city of Nevada for the award of community development plot grant number two zero dash CBN dash zero six eight.
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa and Sandy, any discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved. Taking us to D resolution number thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, resolution authorizing payment of user increased wastewater cost from general reserves.
Move to approve.
Second, Jason Dane, any discussion there? Council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to E approved two thousand and twenty-five city wellness program.
So the city has been doing this for over twenty years now, um, and really the thing that we would like to see approved is. This last month, we shut down city hall for a few hours so we could go over emergency training and uh what to do in case of an emergency. And so we would just like to get approval to shut down city hall for four hours the first Wednesday of September every year, so we can train all of staff rather than uh missing a few every year. Cause that's typically what's ha- has happened in the past is not everybody's been able to participate. Um, so that those are, the options are to approve two thousand and twenty-five wellness program with the annual mandatory four-hour training schedule. Uh, to approve two thousand and twenty-five wellness program or do nothing at this time and ask to revise the program.
Was there any issues when we shut it down this year?
No, um, in Wednesdays, Belinda has been keeping track of Wednesdays, those hours and um because it's. Because it's the first Wednesday of every month, we don't have any issues with water shut offs or turning those back on during that time and people coming into pay typically. So it was a a very low number that we that people came in to visit at that that time.
Move to approve option one.
Second.
Jason, Melissa, discussion? A none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to report, starting with our city administrator.
Uh, so various meetings over the last three weeks, insurance meeting, uh, which ended up being very positive. We have a dupe two percent decrease this year. Uh, I applied for the Discover Ames a grant grant for the Pizza Pie Losa again this next year. That's various and several wastewater meetings, including the Rotary coming and visiting as well as C visiting the the plant. I had our MS Main Street Board meeting, pre-diagnostic Lincoln Highway meeting pertaining to the structure, the uh stabilization underneath the bridge. ADC meeting, uh Brett and I attended the Ag breakfast. We also attended the Alliant Energy Roundtable, which um they discussed various plans on development as well as uh prices increases towards customers um. Commercial and residence residential, and then also had a downtown speaker meeting because that's something that's been planned for about four years and. Um, some changes have occurred, so we've had to re-talk with other people about getting something going. But um aside from that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions regarding tonight or my uh report that I. Send in to you guys and put in the agenda.
Can you give us an update on the wastewater facility planning?
Yeah, so so that's a couple of things there. Um, been working with Burke on a couple of items. One was our engineers reviewed to see if there's the ability to. Adjust their daily limits now, so they don't have to truck as much over to Ames. Um, we did get the green light for that, so I know Jordan and Brandon were corresponding about final details to get that to DNR. So that can get approved, and then we have alignment on the top line numbers, and so Karen was analyzing. That there was a change or request to change the payment schedule, so she was analyzing what that does to the bond repayment, so we'll be going over that with development committee after the meeting tonight, but. That was definitely a big item to take care of, and then there's some of the smaller items, so we're looking at an in-person meeting towards the end of the month that hopefully will get finalized to schedule, so we can wrap up some of the pending items.
Thank you. Are we thinking we might have a potential new fee structure schedule in the next couple of months?
Hopefully sooner, yeah, so we'll get back with them after we meet with Dane and Jason tonight, send it back over Burke's way, and then as long as that aligns and they'll. Plug it into the ordinance, and I'm sure Aaron will have to review it and all that, but then that will come to council. Thing, anything else for Jordan's report, and then I'll. Commandeer that question, but. Okay, a couple, uh, Jordan hit on the Alliant thing. I thought it was really informative, um, very helpful. I learned quite a bit in the time that we had with their leadership on kind of what they're planning for the utility mix for their long-term plan for economic development. They do have a rate moratorium for five years, so. That'll be locked in for five years, which is good. Um, and yeah, they're working on, and then they also have some new tools to help with economic development. Cause one of the big issues we've had is there were projects that wouldn't look at our region because consumers didn't have the capacity and alliance prices were too high, but they have the ability to work with basically development agreements of their own with some users if they have unique circumstances. So they've been able to compete quite a bit and even have lured in some data centers which are high electric users throughout the Cedar Rapids area, so. That was new information that I thought was good, because that was one of my largest concerns with the line going into that was some of the economic development hurdles we'd had of late. Otherwise, uh, we had a meeting in here, and then there was a Zoom too on the Story County Water and Land Legacy Bond, so both of those were really informative. Um, I'd encourage you to check out that information, because you'll probably get some questions about it. Um, and if you have any questions, I can direct you to the folks leading that drive. If you have any questions you want to ask them to. That was it for my report unless you have any other questions. Council reports.
Report.
Thanks.
I just wanted to update you that the county is in a uh countywide burn ban. Uh, the driving conditions are such that uh we'll begin a lot of the crops out and get a couple of first frost and. Are able to. Probably three exemptions for burning, uh, that's recreational fire and a fire pit, uh, food preparation and religious ceremony, candles at a wedding.
Thanks, Ray. Marla. Tim.
Just one item, I didn't have my report, and that is to let you know with the cold weather coming, we're gonna start to shut off water out to in parts and cemeteries, so that'll be happening. We'll try and leave on as much as we can, but uh in order to avoid the task, we'll take it. Any questions, you can send one. Otherwise, I'd have to answer any questions.
Thanks. Thanks, Tim.
I don't have anything other than my report, but I'll answer any questions.
Why is your picture on the wall?
Death planning zoning.
Parents?
Um, saying you have my report. Um, I left away Wednesday through Friday this week and I'm working on finalizing the audit, so. Wrapping up to. Getting ready for budget, budget workshop for our committee workshop for budget after next meeting, so Mayor Dane and Steve.
Nothing for me. Nothing for us.
Anything from Ryan?
I'm good, thank you.
Aaron. Okay, so that gets us to the review of the voting system. Are we doing that?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to.
Sounds good.
Um, so I didn't actually pull it up on your guys' computer, so. So you can just pull up your web browser. I should be saying Microsoft Edge.
This is Kennedy, she comes all day. Two, two back. Oh, we should have them from the students. It was yours. Oh, it was babe.
There we go.
I think she has your login.
There's a little star.
See what's going on.
That star. And then. That star, click on. Oh, there we go, that's. Favorite sky.
Where, where's this at?
That's not. Have a favorite star.
Oh, yours is there.
There's a space, yeah.
Mine wasn't over there.
Oh, God.
I don't have a password.
Oh, your password's on there?
No.
Refresh.
Mine was in.
I did. Look at that.
He doesn't have his password come up automatic.
Five right on the back of Brandon's picture.
It's your first name, uh.
The secret.
Are you guys all up?
Yes.
Yeah, and then click on October fourteen.
So then I start the meeting. My page is up here.
Hard to teach over here, isn't it? Download again, I'm like, I did it. You'll actually just click on the link, like on the date, and then I'll take you to the overview of the agenda.
Correct.
I told him the correct.
Thanks.
Um, Jason knows everything.
I don't know everything. I just remember.
So then, Mayor, you would just run through the meeting as normal.
So on mine, everything's grayed out.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we've gone through it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, cause we've gone through it. And already voted.
That what it's gonna do, I don't think it's. Oh, do I need to have them post right?
Yeah, I wanna see if it'll come.
Seeing I already posted.
Which one are you on?
Um, number twelve, change order five.
Yeah, there's a double thing, but it's not.
I opened it.
Yeah, it says it's.
Oh, it turned, turned on. Add a number twelve.
Yeah, it's awful.
And there's not even.
Keep going.
Just like look on the brain. Just watch.
My judge. I had.
I don't, I don't even think Jordan plays each week, I think he just lets his kid push the buttons.
Mayor, I know you guys have another meeting, we can table it.
Literally. So I think Aaron says we're gonna table this, not that we continue to work out the glitch.
What about like for, like on the consent agenda when we remove one part? Would that be something that you can do right away or is that something that throws the system into haywire too?
It would probably be something that I would just do on my end and note in the minutes.
If I were to let you know in ahead of time, would that have been easier?
Um, either way, I think, cause again, I, I'll just put it in the minutes.
Okay.
And then mine stays gray the whole time, so you have to figure that out too. Okay, so, thank. And that was our final.
Yeah.
Final thing.
Then I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Dane, Jason, all those in favor?
Hi.
You goes, and then we are adjourned.